Discussion on pool agreement, presentation of strategic plan update, discussion on branding, and a discussion on a deer call. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments on work-related items. Is there any public that would like to make a comment on work-related items tonight? Because somebody just walked in late, anybody want to make comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, discussion on refuge. McCula.
And Bradford.
And Bradford, excuse me.
So last month, we came before you, gave you some information on this topic. And then, we noticed as soon as we walked away from the podium that some of the numbers didn't seem quite right. And discovered that there was an error in, in the spreadsheet. And changed the bottom line for the different options that we had talked about. So we kind of wanted to just go through those numbers again for you. The ad hoc refuse committee was formed by council at the request of the DDA to look at downtown collection services. So we've arrived at what the DDA agreed to as a solution on that. But then the next step for the committee was to look at citywide, how is garbage collected? And what could be approved upon? Currently, we've got a three-tiered system where you've got the mini, which is one to two bags a week. The regular, which is the four to six, four to six bags per week. And then, I think it's the ninety-six gallon tote. At first, the refuse committee recommended going to tote systems citywide. And for several different reasons. But it keeps the community cleaner by keeping the garbage contained in those pla- plastic containers. It's very consistent as far as the pickup. In the refuse collection business, we've been informed that there's a lot of automation that's coming forward. The labor costs are one of the highest drivers in our price increases. So if they could do a system where they could put the tote dumps on, on the trucks that serve the city, they could reduce the labor cost substantially, which, which will, will hold back on future increases to us. And then, we still have to address other commercial needs outside of that. Conversation from the committee, though, also recognized that there's a lot of single-income households and fixed-income households that may not, may not be able to, to utilize the full tote on a weekly basis. And may not want to for various reasons, may not have a place to store it. So, came up with kind of a hybrid system where the city manatee would offer for sale, city trash bags. And then, if residents opted to not pay for the cart, they could buy those trash bags, their thirty-gallon bags. And then, they simply could put the, the bags out at their own discretion. So, they may not put anything out this week, they may put out one bag, they may put out two. Once you use a number of bags per month, then economically, it makes sense to go to, back to the tote system. So the refined numbers that we have show you, the first column under the status quo, or the second column under status quo, shows what we anticipate the costs are for our current levels of service beginning July first of next year. So trying to look into the, into the future. The mini service would run about six dollars and thirty-two cents a month. The regular service would cost twelve dollars and sixty-four cents a month. And we expect the tote cost to be about eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per month. If we went to the second option, which is all totes, obviously, there'd be no mini service, there'd be no regular service. But everybody would be placed on the tote service. And that would bring the cost down on a monthly basis to eleven dollars and eighty cents. So, that's a five dollar and fifty cent increase if you're on the mini service. But it would be about an eighty-four cent reduction if you're on the regular. And then, over seven dollars savings per month if you're currently on the tote system. If we went to the totes with the opt-out option, just purchase the bags, and making the assumptions that the bags would be for sale for two dollars and fifty cents apiece. A mini service, if you put out one bag per week, would cost you ten dollars a month. If you put out two bags per, per month, then it would cost you five dollars. So it gives the, the customer the ability to control that somewhat. Again, we wouldn't have the regular service as an offer. The tote price would go up to fifteen oh two, partially because we still have to pay for a little bit of the labor cost to pick up those bags. But then, there's also just intrinsic cost for purchasing bags. And so the, the efficiency drops and the price goes down to fifteen oh two. So that still is al- almost a four-dollar savings from the current, or the anticipated tote prices next July. And it's about a two dollars and forty-some cent increase over the regular service today.
One thing that going to the tote plus bag service does introduce into our system, which we haven't had before, is that there is a little bit of pricing risk to the city. Because we can't perfectly model the mini customers or even the regular customers if they're going to go to a bag. You know, we've tried to build that into our numbers so that we have enough of a cushion there. And we think that would work out, but there's a very small chance that things don't work out as we had kind of projected, that we might need to revisit those rates slightly, maybe mid-year. But we don't anticipate that would happen, but there is some pricing risk. Because when you have s- solid pricing tiers like we have now, we pretty much know how to price it. We know how much revenue we're going to get each month, where there's a little bit of variability in the tote plus bag system. But it also allows the more flexibility, so that's, that's the trade-off.
And so, the, the numbers are based on the assumption that about half of the current mini customers, so there's almost sixteen hundred of those customers. So, we assume that half of those would, would move to the tote system. And about eight hundred of them would stay with, would opt out and use the bags. So that's what those numbers are based on.
One of the thing that Matt Biletti mentioned, and I have it in the memo that you have on your desk there as well, is the, the increase in the contract that they, that they would foresee if we stayed with a, or went to a tote bag system, would be a little bit higher than if we went to the all tote system on a year-over-year basis, simply because for the factors that Jeff talked about and Matt talked about when he was here, it's more labor-intensive to have to pick up a combination of totes and bags than it is to go to the full automation. But they are sensitive to the fact that, they know that's a pretty sizable mandatory increase for the people that are on the lowest level of service now. But that's just something that he pointed out, that they figure in when they're factoring in their pricing.
He figured, do you have any idea of how much of an increase?
Year-over-year, we haven't negotiated that contract yet, but I, you know, I think it's going to be, it'll be nor- probably north of three. I mean, Matt would be able to, I think this last time was four percent a year.
I think he's anticipating at least four.
At least four, so, I mean, that's, they have fuel costs, they have labor costs, those are their two biggest issues. And those, they, they're having a hard time keeping drivers apparently.
I don't know how this affects the city residents as far as cleanliness goes. Because I just see people putting out one or two bags every week. I, I think you're being overly optimistic about your numbers. I think you're, you're going to retain the majority of those mini customers. But putting out bags and having animals rip into them and everything else that happens, it's just going to look pretty messy. That's my comment, so that's my, that's my concern about the, the bags.
If I remember correctly, the bags can still be put in a container, they'll take the bags out of the container, right?
You can, you could put your own container out there with the city bags and then...
As long as the bags are the right color?
Correct.
Anybody else?
Currently, with, with the taxes that we collect and the money that we collect from individual households, are we in the red for trash and refuse, or are we in the black?
We're almost, it's a good question, we're almost at the equilibrium point. It used to be that the refuse millage was paying for a good portion of the residential pickup. We're almost to the point now where the, the annual or the monthly fees that we get for the service pay for that service. And the re- the millage part of it pays for all the recycling and the yard lace pickup and the, those sorts of things. So, it didn't used to be that way because the, the milk portion used to be a lot bigger section. But we haven't increased the millage in a very long time. The tax base had actually declined, so we had to raise the user fees more each year. And now, to the point where those user fees almost pay for the residential collection. So it's pretty much even there.
So, so, if, if we didn't do any adjustments, then I'm assuming that next year, this would run us into the red if we didn't make any changes in fees or structure?
Yeah, we've been adjusting the, the residential user rates up and the, and the commercial user rates up every year in order to make that budget balance.
And that's, and that's why in the status quo column, those are projected numbers for July of, July first of next year. So that anticipates, that would anticipate increases after we negotiate the contract.
So the six thirty-two is not the current rate? It was the five dollar in some sense that was reflected before?
Yes.
Right, this is, this is anticipating the increase that Republic Waste is likely to give us under, if we stayed status quo for July first, twenty twenty.
But right now, it's less than that, it's five, it was five dollars and change. I, I don't have those figures in front of me.
I don't remember what that price is.
Right, it's not the, the rates that you're charged today.
Right.
It's what we anticipate July first next year.
And is the eighteen ninety-six, is that, I thought it was seventeen? So all of these rates are showing an increase of about a dollar or so?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Seeing none, thank you very much, gentlemen.
So I guess before, before we leave, we're kind, maybe kind of looking for a little bit of direction because city manager's going to have to enter into negotiations relatively soon to get a contract in place for, for July one, twenty twenty, and to kind of know which direction we want to head in.
Do, do you want staff to bring it back on a regular agenda for action?
Council, what do you think?
I think yes.
Or are you looking for a consensus on which way you would like us to go?
Yeah, last month, we were, council seemed to be split. But the numbers for the all totes and the totes plus bag were much higher when we recorded those. These are much more accurate than ours.
I like the tote bag, I, from the beginning, I, I haven't changed my mind on that. Anybody else?
Did you say tote bag?
Tote, tote, tote plus the bags, the option, yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that mixed option myself.
I, I'm personally for the all totes.
I'm for the all totes.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Well, I, I think that, again, what we probably could look at is, is the, the hybrid for the first year and see how that works out. And just to get an idea whether or not it's beneficial or not, overall, for the fifteen hundred customers that are going to be having their garbage fees potentially double, doubled if we go to the totes.
Well, if they're using one bag a week, that's ten dollars. We're talking eleven eighty, we're talking a dollar anymore, a month, overall.
Well, no, if you're, if you're, right now, if you're in the mini, you'd be six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Yeah, I think it's better to, to go into this gradually and do that.
And, and if you were, and if you had to go to all totes, then they would be basically paying eleven eighty. And actually, now, it's, it's a little over five dollars what they're paying. So, it's a hundred percent increase in their fee. Whereas, it with the, with the, with the tote bags, the buying the bags, we, we given an idea to see, are they really in that mini category? And we'll know by the sales whether or not we're in the ballpark, whether or not the tote makes sense following, you know, maybe next year to go with all totes.
This contract...
And by now, there's no, right now, I watched, there's, there's no trucks with the, with the automated tote system on them that I saw. So, they have to invest in that technology before there's any real savings.
And, and we rely on, on information from Republic on what the industry's doing. The ad hoc committee got information on what other communities are doing. And going towards that automation i- is where the industry's headed, it's where communities are headed. But the committee also recognized that we've got a lot of fixed-income people and, and didn't want to burden them with that big increase right off the bat. So, that's why they, they recommended a bag option.
And, and on, and if you advertise the eleven eighty over the, the current twelve sixty, or the, the fifteen over the twelve sixty, you may find a lot more people going with the, the totes if there's only a two or a three-dollar difference in price. Again, that would be something that Republic or us would have to market to people to, to kind of get that balance.
A- as we add, as we add more totes and, and keep going in that direction, the price of the totes conceivably could come down as the, you know, the bags are just kind of leaned out of the system.
How long is the agreement going to be for, the contract?
It's through...
I think it was a five-year contract last time.
Right, but I think it, according to the memo prepared by Ed, it expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty. For the, the collection system struc- structure, when the existing contract expires.
So the one that we're renewing, though, how long is that for?
We'd probably recommend five years, it just makes sense with this type of a contract. But we could weigh in options that allow the city to switch.
To all totes.
From, to all totes if we...
And, and I would suggest that, that we, we do that if, if, if we can go with the, the totes plus bags is right in the, the option. So that if it gets to the point where we have the majority of people in the, in the totes and not in the bags, that we would be able to switch over.
And, and I think it's really important for the community and the council to understand, this is an enterprise fund. So, these fees are intended to cover just what it costs us to do the service for, for the citizens. We keep a little bit of money, just for cash flow purposes. But the rates only go up as the costs go up.
One of the things that is a little bit of a disadvantage of the, of the bag system from a, I guess from a staff perspective, is we're going to be selling a lot more garbage bags from down in our office, and it's, it's hard enough sometimes to keep up with the, with the leaf bags. But we're going to try to do similar things with the leaf bags where we have, retailers can sell them, you know, War Hardware or Family Fair, whoever. But there's going to be more volume of people coming in to get those, depending on how that works, so. But we won't really know where those customers are going to realign themselves until we get into the system and we start to have some metrics to see that, and then we'll have a lot better idea of where that's going.
And I think you need at least twelve months so that we know what seasonally it's going to look like and what it's going to look like for the rest of the year.
So, go ahead.
If we can get in the agreement that we can change in a year and see how it looks, then I would be for the totes and bags. But if it's a five-year, that's a little different.
I, I think we can build in that flexibility so that we're not locked in to one program for five years.
I, I could see, we could look at it annually, you know, and I don't see that being a problem with Republic.
Well, you know, I don't mind paying the two fifty a bag, but, you know, you take a ride around and you see all these people that leave the garbage in the backyard. I don't care how many totes you put back there, if they don't fill them up and they don't melt. Don't matter what you got there, where you're still stuck with the bags in the backyard.
Are, are you, did you get enough information?
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving right on. Discussion on shoreline erosion. Mr. Middleton. It's your turn.
Thank you.
You think?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Thad asked me to give an update, kind of a snapshot on the bank erosion we've been seeing along the west end of the Manistee Channel. And if you recall, we gave a presentation in May of this year. And it's not my, it's not my point to reiterate that presentation. And we're really just focused on what we've done since then and some of these design concepts, alternatives we've, we've been kind of kicking around. So it's a little snapshot and give you a little sense of what we've worked on since the, the last presentation in May. One thing I will reiterate is the water is high, we're all well aware of that. Just looked at it on Friday. On the last month, the lake came up two inches since September, which is normally going down this time of year. It's sixteen inches above where it was last year, and it's almost three feet above average for October. So, we're heading into the fall-winter with lakes, lake being high. So since the last time we met in May, the river, there was work done on the Riverwalk to reopen it. There was a lot of, if you recall, there was trees and brush over the boardwalk, closing it off. The city cut that, cut those out. There was damage to the boardwalk near the net shed. That's since been shored up with some steel pilings. And then, the big item was the work below the First Street Overlook, replacing the Riverwalk that was damaged by ice and wave action from last year. As part of that, Swodorsky Brothers also put some additional stone in below the First Street Overlook. They put in some heavy riprap. If you recall, we did that the year before to kind of shore up, we're trying to buy time, do some of these measures to kind of stave off the erosion that's happening at the toe. That area is really critical because it's below the, the retaining wall at First Street Overlook. We've also done survey of the entire, since May, we've actually surveyed now the entire rivers. We've got some good elevations to help with planning and design. And as part of that, we also are starting to monitor the retaining wall at the overlook. We've put some set points out there that we can shoot on a recurring basis, survey on a recurring basis, to make sure that wall's not moving. Because that wall is, it's up on the bank, it doesn't go, you know, tens of feet into the ground. It kind of sits perched a little bit. So with the erosion, we just want to keep an eye on it, so we're ahead of it. To kind of simplify it, I've taken and broken up some of the erosion into three unique areas. Reaches, I'm going to call them reach A, B, and C. They all kind of have similar characteristics, so I've lumped, lumped them together. And I'll just walk through those. This first reach would be basically from the stub pier to the west side of the boat launch. And that's the area that today is all slab concrete, is what's used for the protection along the toe of the bank. And for the most part, that's holding in there. But there is a couple spots specifically by the pump station. There's one area that eroded, if you recall, it's been, uh, snow fenced off so nobody can access it where it's eroded, up kind of close to the existing sidewalk. So that area really is fairly, fairly stra- I wouldn't say straightforward, but fairly straightforward. We've got to work with the Corps and Eagle to determine permitting requirements. But the concept would be something along the lines of getting in at the toe of that slope, putting in armor stone revetment, that's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers words for big stone that's angular, that locks together. They don't, they don't use slab concrete, this is going to be an angular stone. If you can picture what's to the west of U.S. Thirty-One Bridge, that area on the north side of the river, that would be, it'd be similar to what that looks like, if you can picture that. So the idea would be, that would be placed at the toe of the slope. And that would be to an elevation that would protect against waves and ice damage. And then, behind that, we would fill in with engineered backfill to get a stable slope. That would be topsoil seeded with native vegetation, could be dune grass, could be some other form of vegetation that can just establish and help hold that bank. To have some numbers at least to talk about, we have to make a lot of assumptions on what the limits would be. And there's no permitting yet, there's no design yet. So, I've kind of ballparked some costs on that for that reach, as you see up there, between seventy and one-hundred-and-ten. And it really depends on the extent of the work and the bidding environment. And what, and what the DEQ and Eagle have to say about it, or, or the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The next reach, which to me is the most critical one, this is the reach basically below the First Street Overlook and the retaining wall that's in that area, holding up a portion of the parking lot. This area has had, it has similar protection, that was placed there many years ago, it's slab concrete. It actually goes the full length of this, but a lot of it's underwater now. So the waves literally wash over the top of it and are hitting exposed unprotected banks. And if you've walked the Riverwalk, you, you know what I'm talking about there. So, to kind of, to give you one of the concepts we're looking at, I like, I use cross-sections. So if you can envision standing on the side of the bank, kind of looking at a slice through the embankment and through the wall, that's what this visual adhere would be. The dashlines that you see on here are the existing elevations of the ground. So this section's kind of cut through the parking lot, over the top of the retaining wall, and then down into the water by the Riverwalk. You can see the boardwalk here in the picture at this location. So this is existing, the boardwalk's existing, and the dashlines are all existing grades. One of the things we need to do here is to make sure the base of that wall is stable. So we don't want, we don't want, we don't want to lose any soil underneath it, and we want to maintain some soil up the face of that. There are signs that with the erosion that's happened there, the dirt has sloughed down the face of it. You can see where it slid down the face of that wall. So in the long, so for long-term protection, we really need to evaluate, how do we get that protected from wave and ice action and then sta- having a stable slope? The problem with this option or this alternative is, to get that stable slope, the Riverwalk is so close to the toe of that retaining wall, it's very steep. We don't have a lot of room to actually get in. The rock and the slope make it stable. So, with this, this concept, we'd either be looking at raising the Riverwalk, maybe using the existing foundations and extending it up over the top of this rock, or maybe having to slide it left or right, or out, maybe a little to the north.
How many feet is that, 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 how, how, how long is that section?
Uh, the, so the, on the bottom there, you can see these two forty, two sixty, two eighty, those are in feet. So from the wall, you know, from the parking lot to that toe, we're looking at about forty feet. From the Riverwalk, you're probably in the range, from the face of the wall to the Riverwalk, you might be twenty-five, twenty feet, to give you a sense of how close it is. So this idea would be similar to what we're talking about on reach A. We would install armor stone revetment at the toe, get that to an elevation that protects against wave and ice, and then engineered backfill behind it, again, topsoil seed, and protect the toe of the, of the retaining wall. This next cross-section is really, is, is similar, except it's not at the retaining wall. This is still at the parking lot. And we've seen some areas of the parking lot on the very east end where the ground has sloughed away from the back of curb. And this would be doing the same thing, getting stone in at the toe, backfilling so we can get a stable slope and protect the parking lot from sloughing. So I won't go through all the, the details of it, but basically, it's the stone, the backfill, stable at restoring it, and then doing what we need to do with the Riverwalk. Again, it's hard to have any idea until we talk to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle about exactly what a permit will require. But, you know, guesstimating, we think you could spend is somewhere between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars to go across that entire area. We're typically conservative, try to be conservative in these numbers, but that's, that's the estimated cost to do that work in that area. The final reach, see if you, if you can recall from our meeting in, last May, there was erosion that's in the, kind of the rear yards of some properties on First Street. It's on city property, that's the erosion, but that city property butts up to properties on First Street. This reach has a combination of seawalls that some are wood in bad shape, there's some steel ones, there's that are in poor shape, there's some steel ones that are in better, fair shape, but they're undercut. And then, there's reach, there's reaches that are, as you move farther east, that are un- completely unprotected and are just exposed banks that are having erosion. This is some of the area where we've seen the trees fall down, the one tree that sloughed down the bank in some photos we had, and the trees that fell on the Riverwalk were in this area. So again, looking at this from a side view, kind of looked at a couple of different scenarios. One is where there is seawalls, and especially the ones that are in decent shape. There's, some of the seawall has a good, good slope behind it, it's protected, well-vegetated, but it's undercutting, so maybe just getting some rock, stone revetment in front of that to stabilize and hold that current wall, we could do that for a portion. As you move farther to the east, you kind of leave the seawall area, this section is... As you move farther to the east, you kind of leave the seawall area, uh, this section is in or very close to that, uh, where we seen the tree that slid down the bank. This is kind of the worst erosion area. Uh, this area, uh, we'd be looking at getting, kind of building a stone, uh, revetment toe. Uh, that again, this would be set to an elevation that'd protect against wave and ice action, but it'd also serve as kind of an anchor for placing backfill behind it. Uh, because it's so eroded here, uh, that would be placed out a little ways you, to recapture a little bit of that lost bank, but more importantly, to get a stable slope. And so it's a, it's a slope that, you know, can be maintained and won't erode. This last cross-section is an area that, um, doesn't have seawalls, but is not nearly eroded, um, but, but needs protection, so that the stone protection would be just at the toe and, uh, for the main purpose of preventing any further erosion. And then above that, there may be some backfill to sta, to get that, um, slope stable. And again, this one's even harder to estimate because, um, where the actual work limits would be is very difficult to estimate, but assuming a good portion of that has those three details in it, we'd be in this range. Um, again, subject to working with US Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle and getting actual bids. If we don't do anything, you know, right now, funding is our main item and main issue, um, you know, what are the, some of the concerns? Um, from an infrastructure standpoint, the retaining wall at First Street Overlook, the parking lot at First Street Overlook, um, the boardwalk itself, we seen last year, ice and wa, wave damage can wreak havoc there. Uh, we could be looking at a similar situation this year. Uh, to a lesser extent, the pump station, there's some outfalls that are along the river, uh, that could be impacted by con, continued erosion. Then on the private side, for the most part, this is all on city property, but that one, there's that one location where it's extended beyond city property onto private property a little bit. So next steps, um, you know, we, uh, just been working with the Corps, uh, a little bit. We gotta continue to work with them. Um, you know, they've, they haven't come out with it, they haven't come out writing checks or anything. Uh, they're probably more on the permitting side, assisting us through, uh, the process, but we're gonna continue to work with them and Eagle, cause the permits will probably drive the design and the costs. We'll look at, uh, funding sources, um, you know, we're kind of limited there, but there's been, you know, still discussion on other grants or loans available. There's some kind of, I wouldn't call them class action, but there's been a lot of communities on the lake shore that have concerns about this erosion, similar to what we have, uh, all kind of trying to identify as resources of funding that could help us. Uh, from the insurance side, it's just been, that's actually kind of, uh, reactive, you know, when we have damage to infrastructure, insurance has paid for it, but on the proactive side, we really have to find other funds. And if we can find a way of funding the work, um, you know, the next steps will be design, permitting, bidding, instructions, so. Now, it's kind of quick. I just wanted to give you a, a taste of where we're at on it and, uh, happy to take questions or discussion.
I've, I've got one on the, you know, again, walking on, and you mentioned that, uh, especially in the area where you have the property owners, uh, above, where we had that significant, um, loss of property. That's all city property, right? So how did the, those, the different seawalls get built? Because you've got, like you said, you have some that are steel that are in good shape. You have some that actually now the water is at, at the top of the, the water, so now there's literally water behind the, the wall. And then that big space where we lost the big tree, there's no protection in front of that at all.
Right.
So I don't understand how all those different options kind of got built.
And it, and it predates me, so I don't know a lot of, I've heard a lot of pieces of it, so mine's kind of second, third party. Um, I think some of them were installed by property owners, um, at their own costs and sort of their own specs, I guess that's the way I'd put it. I think with the permission of the city. Um, I know there was different, there's, uh, there's some, a lot of legal background that they had at, at the end down there with the erosion that's happened. And I don't know all those details, um, Mr. Sailor could talk better to that, but, uh, there is a lot of, um, uh, history there on, on those lines, but I think a lot of them were actually, uh, done by the prop, the adjacent property owners on city property, so.
Shaun on the wall, the rock wall. I remember when they put that in, they had some issues with it at that point. They had to take it down and put it back up again. Um, it, you're, you're telling me that's not too stable? Can we put enough money into it to make it stable?
Well, it's not that it's unstable. It's just with the erosion moving towards closer to that wall, you know, it is, if the wall was very deep, it would've been very expensive to do that, but if it was real deep, we wouldn't be so concerned about it, but it sits kind of perched, you know, it's perched, it's perched up above everything. So if we, as we start to undercut, there's a point where that load is transferred and we get to, if we're starting to cut into that, then that's actually, uh, could affect it structurally, so just trying to stay ahead of it. Um, we're monitoring just to, you know, be comfortable that it's not doing anything significant. We've noticed there's a little settlement behind the wall, the one spot that's been there quite a long time, but we don't know the exact cost. We decided, well, let's just start taking survey shots on it and watching it. Um, with the long term, we really, you know, other than, you know, tearing the parking lot out, put tiebacks in and trying to make that thing independent, it's a lot easier to really just to build the, the front slopes up and foundation up to protect, you know, protect the foundation.
Anybody else?
The Corps of Engineers doing anything for Sean?
They'll look at our permit applications. That's so far what I've gotten out of them. Um, we're, we're still trying to set up another meeting. I had one, Jeff and I actually talked to the same person one time, asking more about the money side of it. Um, and they weren't, they didn't have anything, you know, a bag that we could dip our hands into. Um, they said that really they could help maybe on the design, potentially could be an option in the study side, but, um, now with the construction.
What we've found is that if you have permit questions, the permit agents are more than happy to come up here. Usually can schedule that within a week or two, but getting the permits is impossible. Um, as far as the, we've contacted the head of their design group out of this region. Um, and they said that they'd be willing to do a conference call and talk to us about it. We're trying to get them here so they can physically see it. Um, but they're responding to these things across the entire Great Lake region.
Have we put pencil to paper to try to figure out how we could come up with the, some of these costs?
Not at this time. You know, we, there's some variables and they talked, and Shaun talked about them, there's, you know, what's the permit gonna look like, which is gonna drive, you know, our specs that we're gonna bid out and things of that nature. So no, we haven't, we're not at that point yet.
Well, I think it's a, I agree it's a moving target, but I mean realistically, how, how could you even come up with two hundred thousand?
Um, at this time, about the only option we have would be fund balance. Um, there's, I've been, I'm part of a manager's listserv and there's been a lot of emails back and forth, um, uh, from managers that, that manage on communities on the coast. And they're running into the same problem in terms of there's no funding from the state or federal governments to help with this problem. So, um, you know, people are looking at it and they're making concerted effort to reach out, but so far we've not, collectively as managers, seen any source of funding.
And I'm assuming loans is, is one of the possibilities?
That's, that's certainly all, always a possibility.
Close to, uh, at least a million dollars probably right at the high end.
It depends on how aggressive we want, you know, if we want to try to correct the problem all at once or do a phased-in approach. You know, those are all, always have to be considered, but it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be out of our pocket in one way or the other. Either it's gonna be fund balance or a loan. I don't see any other options right now.
And one of the important things is if, if we had chosen a sheet pile option, where we started at one end and we just started doing sheet pile, the sheet pile doesn't absorb energy. It reflects the wave energy. So you can actually create problems further down the shoreline. This system, uh, with the stone revetments absorbs that wave energy and doubles back on it, so you're not, when a wave hits a wall or a vertical structure, it actually doubles in size and comes back at you. That energy doesn't go away. So even if this was phased in, any little bit would, would help.
So if I hear you correctly, it's what Eagle tells us we can do and how much, that's to determine how much it's gonna cost us.
Well, I think that, I, I really don't see us having an issue getting permits for this type of work. What, what we're trying to do is we've got a wave study that the Corps of Engineers did, uh, for the city for some potential projects in the past. And the results of that wave study really indicate that the wave energies are beyond what I would term is, is, is acceptable within our inner harbor and as it goes up the shoreline. We also know that behind those residences and what you call Reach C is one of the narrowest parts of the river, and because of the steep banks, the Corps of Engineers restricts, um, the dredging that they do there. They don't even dredge the full width of the navigation channel, which is pretty rare. So because they've got an issue and they can't dredge it wide enough to how they normally maintain their navigational channels, because they've done a study that shows that the wave ref, reflections off the ste, the steel that's on the Coast Guard side or the north side, we're hoping that if we can get them here, show data that they've produced and show that there's some benefits, maybe we can leverage some, some funding from the federal government. It's, it's a, I wouldn't, wouldn't bet my paycheck on it, but, but that's one of the options that we're trying to pursue.
So is, is some of the damage, uh, caused by the actual, the, the boats going in and out of the harbor as well as just the wave action? Is that quantifiable?
I don't know if it's quantifiable. It is discussed in the, in the wave study a little bit. And the residents, uh, that live along there are very adamant that thrusters from the freighters cause a lot of turbulence and, and create a lot of erosion issues. Certainly that's one of the arguments for the narrowness of, of that maintain area.
Anybody else?
By the way, good job on cleaning up the fallen trees. I saw that you've got most of, almost all of them cut down and pulled away, so at least there's no, doesn't look like there's potential additional damage for the trees falling onto the, the, uh, Riverwalk. Except that there's a couple of birch trees that, since you've probably been there the last time, have taken a pretty serious tilt.
Yeah, the ones that, the really big ones, we begged and pleaded, our contractor that was doing the marina work and some of the Riverwalk repairs, um, to take them out with a barge and crane, and, um, we got as much out as they would, were willing to do, probably a little bit more, but.
Anything else? Thank you, John. Next, discussion on pool agreement. Mr. Grabowski.
Well, I think the last time we discussed this, uh, people said to me, oh, you're ruining it for the kids. I said, I'm not trying to ruin anything for the kids. Uh, what we're trying to do is clear up some of the complaints that go on, which according to the school, that these, they have people up there. Uh, if we remember, I think everybody should've got the letter. I think we got two letters this year. Uh, I got a lot of calls about the pool being dirty. Um, I got, and this one lady says they don't have anybody, uh, I got two letters here. Forty kept grounds, well, Danny Burry had a shovel to walk. That was in the wintertime. The pool's usually empty other than swimming classes. Pool does not seem to be utilized, is managed. That brings in the revenue. There's no manager or director at the pool. Maybe they've done it since then. I don't know. I've not seen a sign on who to contact. Website only mentioned the director, Corey. Uh, she goes on about all her complaints, and so I was just trying to see if we can't get this thing, uh, if these problems are existing, somebody should be acting for it. Also, we discussed about, you know, we're giving forty thousand a year. I've got the city assessor's report. And if you look from two thousand and eleven, everything is down on what the city takes in. Where do we keep getting the money? Um, and Mr. Cooper brought up a thing about why do we look for a millage, uh, because everybody's yelling, we need to do the roads. So, you know, we can't keep funding, and I was gonna ask Mr. Sailor if he was here, if the city can keep funding forty thousand every year, uh, should we be looking at other ways to fund? Nobody has answered in the new agreement. Um, like I asked, what happened to Friends of the Pool? Uh, what happened to Madison Township? Why don't these other townships jump into this thing and help out a little bit? So these are my questions and I don't seem answered.
I don't have an answer why the, you know, I don't, I don't know about the Friends of, uh, the Payne Pool. I don't know where that organization is. Unfortunately, um, Corey, or can you answer it, Howard?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to, um, talk a little bit about that and, uh, for any other questions. Howard Bosson, the business manager, um, for the school district. Mr. Stoneman is conducting a public forum on facilities tonight and Corey is at a swim meet, so I'm, I'm here to do my best to answer your questions. Um, and, um, if I could, going back to the, you cited the two, um, letters that were sent to council. Thad, uh, forwarded those to us and we feel that we've followed up on those. There was a, a laundry list of complaints in one and, um, we do our best to be on top of things. Um, I don't know that everything in that, um, that the person who wrote those was aware of everything that was going on at the pool. Um, she cited a few things, um, that I think we just needed to look here instead of there. They were addressed. Um, we, uh, take any complaints on school facilities seriously. At the pool, um, on the website, there's a button, um, that takes you right to email if there's something you see at the pool that you think is an issue. Uh, so, email the director. It goes to the director and copies me so that I can follow up on that. We also have posted at the pool, uh, telephone number for anybody who sees something at the pool, has question or concern. It goes to a secretary at the school. She records that call and then forwards it to myself and the director. So we try to stay on top of those things. Um, I don't remember everything that was cited there, but I can tell you there's, um, it's just like any other entity struggles with probably, where, um, we don't have a full-time custodian, um, housekeeping service there. The facilities are cleaned daily and shoveled at a minimum daily, but sometimes if it's snowing after somebody is shoveled, there, there may be snow in an area. Um, I'm just speculating, uh, her concerns, but I can assure you that we looked through that discussion with the director. He had a discussion with custodian in charge of that area. And I think the other letter that you had forwarded addressed someone who wasn't aware that there were lanes available to them to swim, even though we had, um, that was the community, it was open to the community and there were kids in the pool and some volunteers, or I think more accurately, some patrons who were in the lobby area indicated to them that she was not old enough to go into the area that they use, the over fifty area, and that you don't want to go, you can't go in the general pool. But the general pool was open and there were lanes. They have, I don't know what they call them, but there's, uh, floats that go across the pool to separate it so that the public has an area separate from where the other activities are going on.
I complained, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I don't, I don't mean to take your time. I appreciate you letting me be here and I, I understand Councilman Grabowski's concerns about cost. I live there every day at the school district. And, and I hope that you'll, um, consider continuing this because I truly believe in my heart that this is a model of how little communities can pool their resources together to have facilities that no one of us could have if we tried to do it ourself. Um, this is a two hundred and fifty, well, two hundred and forty thousand dollar a year operation that we run and we have a number of partners. You guys contribute about seventeen percent of the cost. MAPS puts in, um, eighty-five thousand dollars toward operations and we cover all the capital repairs, um, and insurance. The hospital contributes forty-five thousand dollars a year. Filer Township contributes just under fourteen thousand dollars. Um, the model, I'm trying to address why don't other municipalities participate? Um, the agreement, um, that is with council stipulates how other municipalities can join and they pay at the same per resident rate as city residents. So the city contributes forty thousand dollars. We divide that forty thousand by the census of the city. And then we get that factor and we multiply it toward the census of that municipality. When you look at our usage rates, fifty-six percent of the people that swim in the pool are from the city. Um, those other municipalities- Those other municipalities have time for actions of people that actually swim just because they're a further proximity from the pool. And but they're bound by that same per resident rate. So it's just a cost prohibitive from them when they look at the usage. You guys contribute seventeen percent of the cost of the pool. Citizens get a fifty percent discount on all swim as a result of that. And you're about fifty-six percent of the usage of the pool.
I just have a question. I don't use the pool, so I don't know the answer to this question. When you go in to use the pool and there's somebody supposed to be sitting at the desk, how do they identify that they're a city resident?
The patrons there are, there's a list if they're a member, and when they become a member, they actually provide documentation at the office. If they're coming in for a swim, they don't row people. If they're suspicious, I've had volunteers ask them questions, ask for information to confirm that they're a resident of the two participating municipalities. I can't say that people don't, aren't honest sometimes. We try to, you know, do this the best that we can without having the operating costs skyrocket. If we had a paid employee there, we could be much more diligent. But I think that the people that we would find that maybe are paying three dollars a side of sex would never add up to enough money to pay the person to sit there to do that. We we are always looking for better ways to do things. We have, we're discussing now a card system where a person would have to swipe a card to get into the locker room. But that presents a few other issues that we're trying to work our way through. Basically, now we kind of operate on a honor system, kind of like a boat launch, only we don't have the enforcement mechanism of having a police officer come through and, you know, look for for plates. When you enter the pool, there should be a volunteer there. There are volunteers. Sometimes they're not. It's clearly marked at the desk to sign in and to see the lifeguard. So people come in, instructed to sign in, indicate their municipality, go change, contact the lifeguard. He collects their fee, or he has the membership list also, and then they they enjoy their swim.
Well, the reason I asked is I just assumed that maybe they were looking at driver's licenses. And since Filer Township and Manasty Township also share our our post office and the address. I was just wondering how you sorted those people out.
It it blurs. Filer and the city aren't a problem to us because they both, each contribute and get the discount. But Stronach Township, someone from Grant Township somewhere more out, you know. Yep, there could probably be some confusion if they looked at their address and saw Maple, that they they could be somewhere. They could be in Maple Grove for all I know. But it's, it seems to operate, from my standpoint, on a pretty efficient matter with the amount of operating costs that we can support. Again, it's a two hundred and forty thousand dollar operation, dependent on volunteers and they're, they work hard at it. The Friends of the Pool, there's still a group of people who are volunteers at the pool. There's also something along that vein that I wanted to mention. I didn't know if I mentioned it last time I was here, but within the Manasty County Foundation, there's the Corey Van Fleet Perpetual Swim Fund, which has a balance in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. And each year, the interest from that fund comes back to the pool to help offset cost and to expand programming. So there there is not only municipal and tax dollars supporting it, there's individual swimmer fees, and then there's that charitable side of it, too. And all those pieces and the information I left with you, I kind of put together a pie chart of the various sources of operating revenue that show where those come from.
Maybe you can help me. One of the complaints, or one of the things I hear is that complaints aren't answered. Could you walk me through the process? So let's say I get a, I get a letter, somebody complaining.
Yep.
How would I handle that and how would I get feedback that it was handled?
The way that we've received the past was there were two occurrences, and there was something sent to council with a copy to a city manager. City manager forwarded it to the director and then also provided me with a copy. And that's how we go from there. In the case of a phone call, we do have the phone number posted. That goes to a secretary, and then she sends an email to both myself and the director as a result of that.
So you're gonna inform me of the disposition? You're gonna let me know how it was resolved?
The pool director does.
So I know the last meeting that we agreed on forwarding the complaints. And then I had hoped that we would get something back in return saying how those are being addressed. And I'm thinking that's where kind of he's, so once he was going off of, I was hoping to see, okay, that question, this was the answer, this is how we're resolving that.
Well, and I guess it's hard because not all of the, you know, the old two sides to every story. A lot of the information in the email wasn't. There's there's comments like the lifeguard certificates aren't posted. Well, I went and looked. The lifeguard certificates are posted. There's. So I guess I could I could answer each line item, but but generally, overall, those, if there's some contact, it goes to the director, myself. I follow up with the director to confirm that he's righted whatever issue there was, if there was an issue, and had communication with those involved to make sure that it happened. I could, it's it's tough for me to address each line item in in that email.
Well, it, even if, it's more educating, I think, than public. We don't, you know, someone might think that that's not happening, but it really is. So going back and saying, yes, this is how it's being handled.
Okay.
When I receive a complaint or somebody has has some concerns about the pool or any complaint I receive, I feel an obligation as a councilperson to refer to Mr. Taylor or to get an answer and to follow up with that person to make sure that they're satisfied. I think that's part of my responsibility. And what I don't hear you saying is, I'm not getting anything back, but let me know that's been resolved.
Yep, and and that's not my role, but I can can make that my role. Those things are, forwarded the pool director, I have a conversation with the pool director. He gives me, we discuss the instance. He tells me that he's followed up with the people and addressed the concerns. I move on to the next task. But I can certainly also follow up myself with those people. It's not like I receive a lot of those, so.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying that I I think we have an obligation to.
I I agree. That that would be a much better practice.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because of the group I thought people should know that what was going on. And that's why I brought it up, so.
Well, I appreciate that.
You were thinking of trying to ruin everything with the pain people. I said, nobody got that intention.
Nope.
You want to see the pool go up.
Nope, and you're you're, I I hear your concerns is that you want it to be successful. And if there's issues that hampers it being successful, I I'm hearing that loud and clear.
And I I don't think that the pool's gonna close if they lose the forty thousand dollars from the city, right?
Well, as I I spoke before, I'm not, the pool would not be out of business. But with a pool, there's a huge portion of your costs that are fixed. All of the heat and utilities that are happening, whether there's people swimming or not. And I included a financial statement there so you can see that. So your fixed costs eat up a lot of the two hundred and forty thousand dollar budget. Your variable costs are staffing, and when you don't have staffing, you don't have an open pool. So that that's how that that would impact it.
Why can't you do what I told you before? You're asking for thirty million dollars in May. Why don't you just put another thing on the ballot, ask him for forty, the people for forty thousand dollars towards the pool and let them decide what they want to do? Why should us seven people spend forty thousand dollars, the taxpayer's money? Let them, let them decide. Can't you do that? I mean, it's, if you're having an election anyway for thirty million, what's what the heck? But they're lying in there saying forty thousand dollars for the pool, yes or no? Is that possible?
Well, the, it's two different demographics of people. Those forty thousand is the city's contribution in our area expanse without it. But you could go for some type of recreational millage. And we looked at the pool. Prior to the construction of the pool, we visited Luddington Pools. Luddington's pool, the city actually manages that pool. It's at the, located at the high school. But the staff are all city employees. And that was not a model that worked for us because we did not have the resources at the city or a recreational millage to support that. So we, that's how we came upon this model.
Well, also in Luddington, when they pay for using the pool, they ask, they they make out their checks payable to the city of Luddington so that they have an accurate, very accurate accounting of it.
Yep, the the city there under there pays all of the expenses, the the operating expenses. As I said, the employees are city employees. It's it's a completely different model. Here, the city made a contribution, received a fifty percent discount, and then the city, the school district incurs all the operating and expenses and the the capital, future capital.
Anything else?
Well, I I just, a couple of things. First of all, you know, again, I have experienced operating pools. I've done it for the military for many years. And the, to be honest, your budget is very reasonable. It is, it is a very time-consuming, it's a very complex process to run a pool. I don't think most people understand that there's more than just turning the key to the door. You have, you have a lot of issues that are involved in it. And again, yes, you're a community operation. You get complaints. I would expect that you have, and again, may have to refine your your process as far as getting back and making sure that the the complaint is has been vetted. But overall, I'm guessing there's a lot more satisfied customers than there are people who complain. And you're always gonna have people that you're not going to be, you know, completely satisfied at any given time. But when I look at the cost and the cost benefit to the city for forty thousand dollars, and then I would also say that over the ten-year period, the price hasn't gone up. How many other?
That's that's by any view.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, but they've come back in for another ten years with no price increase, which is, like I said, considering inflation and everything else. I'm guessing, and I don't know, but I would guess that the city of Luddington pays a little more than forty thousand dollars to operate their pool.
I don't have those details, but I can tell you that with the city representatives that were with us when we looked at that didn't see that as being a good fit for them. They preferred the forty thousand dollar annual contribution.
So I, you know, again, I think there's a lot of benefits. I, too, have gotten a lot of phone calls on this. I've honestly have been on the other side. All the ones that I've gotten have been positive, saying, you know, keep the pool. It it means a lot to the community. And, you know, overall, like I said, when, other than dealing with a couple of of issues, I think the pool in itself and how it's operated is is well done. And I can't see any real fault in that.
Ed, what's a millage? One mill, what is that roughly? Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
I don't, I've thought ahead at all. I wish Ed was here. He would know it in a minute.
I think it's about one eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand.
A hundred and eighty?
Yeah, I'm guessing.
Or eighteen mills?
For one mill, the revenue is about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Well, then we'd be right.
I think it might be.
I wouldn't be in favor of anything raising taxes, period, for anybody.
I'm not, I'm not looking, don't stop it. We're not going there. But on average, there's twenty-nine hundred, we're using just their dumpster fees. So twenty-nine hundred taxable entities here in the county, or in the city. If you do forty thousand dollars, thirteen dollars a year is what it costs on average per household. Some are a lot less. I I don't see why we're arguing over forty thousand dollars.
My my perspective is we're, the city's providing our city residents access to a pool for forty thousand a year. We can't replicate that ourselves?
No.
And the the schools already, their statistics indicate that the majority of the users are from the city. So I'm just trying to put it in perspective.
Well, we can find out. If you put it through a vote to the people, you'll see how many people use it and want it, right?
I'll vote for it.
I don't care. You can move it. Did you get the right vote or they whatever?
Okay, gentlemen.
I really miss you in a month.
Before we put.
I don't think there was ever an option for me to not fund the pool. I think it's a very good thing to have for our community, and it, we could be paying a lot more. So that's just my personal opinion.
I just think there's a few, few little issues that we need to work out. I do appreciate, unless there's more questions?
Nobody's trying to close the pool. We're just trying to save some money. Did you hear how much it's gonna cost to fix the river? You know, I mean, the channel and then the roads? Nobody says close the pool, but they could go without the forty thousand, and we could put that towards something that's more meaningful for the city of Manasty.
One of the things I've asked the the schools to incorporate in the new agreement is a requirement that they make quarterly reports to me that I can then pass out to council, and then that they do an annual presentation, written presentation and and oral presentation to council. Because it it appears that a lot of it, a lot of the problems stem from not really knowing the operation and the scope of the operation and the number of people served. So maybe that will help educate and enlighten people.
We can improve communication.
Yep, and and we can include in our reporting some, tell you how we're improving closing that loop on communication.
You know, I brought up, I didn't bring up the forty thousand. I brought up that what the problems were. That's what I wanted to get settled. So we're, everybody's got this forty thousand. Blew it out of proportion is your own problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I will put the agreement on a future council agenda for consideration.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your patience. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you and thank you for your input.
Next up, strategic plan. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, the council's had a couple of weeks to look at the update and happy to answer any of the questions that you might have on anything that's in the update.
Well, I see a lot of red.
It's always good.
Is that a good thing?
That's always good. That, where we show, the red indicates something new since the last update.
My only question, are we going to add any of the things that we approved from the Project Rising Tide? And if so, could we do that before we, if we're gonna just make a change, if we're gonna add some of those things before we?
In terms of actions under the strategic plan, we can do that? Yeah, we've been incorporating a lot of the initiatives from the Project Rising Tide because they fit in some of our objectives. So where they fit, that's where we put them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
We haven't had a meeting yet with the the Blight ad hoc yet.
No, that's being scheduled. I I don't know the exact date. Is it the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, right after the Harbor Commission meeting.
Yeah, city was working on putting together a meeting, so. That'll be this month.
Anybody else? Seeing none, moving right along. Discussion on branding. Who's that?
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Okay, so do you remember last, in your last meeting, you guys voted to kind of endorse some of the project, or the Project Rising Tide documents, proposals, and action items? One of those is the presentation of the city of a new brand, a new image that we received through one of the consultants that the state selected. What I'm here in front of you tonight is to kind of go over with you the options that the consultant presented for the city. So you can all, you know, jointly tell me which logo would you like to move forward with or which image? So Thad and I can work together in making it the image for the city. There are a few options I'm gonna go through. We use, so you can tell me what you prefer. And then we'll probably talk more slowly about the process of adopting these. As far as what I've spoken to Mr. Taylor and to Ed, you know, our first step will be to update the website of the city and our social media and kind of all the digital stuff that go to no cost. And then we can evaluate the, you know, the next step forward as far as this. So it's gonna be very short. I just need you to kind of tell me what is your choice in between the options, and then Mr. Taylor and I can work them. So the first slide is just kind of what the consultant proposed to be the image of the community. If we're gonna use wayfinding, if you're gonna change any signs in the community, would you want option A that has that dark green? Or you want option B that is just the white background? That's the question number one. Which one do you see more fitting for the community as we start to use them or explore funding or grant opportunities to use them across the community?
Can you use both? Can you use both?
Um, ideally, we'll use one, but, um, it, it, I'll take any feedback you guys give me, I'm sure.
I'd, I'd go with the A personally.
Yeah, green is, green is nice.
Green? Okay, so, uh, A would be for the overall image of that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry. So it was just a difference of how they look whenever you add the tagline of not, or the soul of the water, spirit of the woods, how it looked in white, and how it looked with the green. So we were to update, if I were to work with Ed Bradford to put it on the website, it would be, it would look like the option B of, with the green in the background. And then this is just kind of different options for the lettering, but if you're picking the green in the background, it kind of makes sense to have that white and the type and the text.
Well, I think you might wanna have a second, because there are a lot of different things that you don't wanna have, of, that the dark banner for. So, maybe the green and yellow as, as a secondary for things which would make sense.
Okay, one of the things that Mr. Taylor asked me when we were looking at this was like, oh, how are we gonna make sure we include that tagline? Whenever we have, you know, our, what is it, the, the header and footer of the sheets, anything that is really into the city. Um, and then we looked at adding the soul of the water, spirit of the woods at the bottom, at the footer of the page, or anything that comes out of the city, as opposed to having it up top to not have a busy image of the city in general. So this is what you currently have, I'm gonna work with Ed to move it to that green with the Manistee, soul of the water, spirit of the woods, if you all agree, agreeing to that. Um, is that, yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, cool, and then, it'll kind of look like that, as we would work it on the website, we'll talk about the Manistee Marina and the different assets that we have, but if we were to use that one, it's kind of the way that it's gonna look, just, this was just a sample. And then kind of moving to the city logo, how we look the top of the pages, and these are just the options in different colors, and then the way that we've envisioned this, this would be your top logo, however way you choose that, and then the tagline will go footer, if it's something in a page, or, uh, you know, in your website in general, but out of these, which one, if you like these to be the official logos of the city too, which one would you prefer?
I'd go with A.
A, I think.
Man, I placed that in there correctly. Okay, any other thoughts? Aaron, Chip?
Sure.
A is fine.
A, okay, so A for the headline of the city, and then, considering you guys picked the one with the green background, if you were to do business cards or anything, it'll kind of look like that, your business cards, city manager, or really anything that comes out of the city for the other parts of the staff.
It, it'd probably just reverse though, right? The green would be on the bottom, and the white would be on the top.
I would think so, we can make it that way, if, if you all think that's better.
The, the one thing about the, the, the dark green and, and the white, it, it's more distinctive than other business cards and sets you apart. You know, I, I don't have any problem with the green at the top, I mean, that's open to consideration.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for a four-color process, no matter what.
Right.
No matter how much you'll be using down there.
I think it's a very sharp-looking.
And, and this is gonna work well on headers, you know, on your letterhead, you don't want a big green banner going across the top, so something like this would actually work.
Okay, and then, this is just kind of a sample, kind of going from the same theme you guys selected, so whenever we have a thought, you know, a logo or use of the Manistee Marina, would you like A, or would you like B?
I like B.
B.
B, okay.
I like the green Marina on A, and like.
Oh, the word Marina, the, okay.
Color.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I can ask the consultant to work that out, and then, this is kind of a sample of how it would look like if we were able to manage to get some funding, or kind of, you know, progressively move to that point, if we were to do wayfinding, and that's just a little bit more, you know, more down forward, but kind of a sample of how it would look like if you were to, since you chose that image of that dark green, and like the image of the community. And then, I think that's it, I just needed your opinion on what would you like to be the, you know, the logo, and I guess I'll just work with Mr. Taylor, so we can make it an official thing, and how we'll work into putting it, city's website, social media, et cetera. And with that, then I'll start, you know, sharing with the community and the other local, local organizations that are waiting to use the logo and the images too. Um, do you guys have any questions, suggestions for me, that I should take back, or work with? No, yes?
Is there, are we going to allow the, uh, images and logos to be used freely for people to advertise?
Mm-hmm, um, actually, I received a question about that, and I'm trying to be very explicit on the fact that anything that says the city, City Marina, that obviously belongs to the city, but the regular logo of Manistee Michigan, soul of the water, spirit of the woods, my expectation is to work with Caitlin and the DDA to give it to the business owners, to work with the chamber, to kind of spread it around, um, and then, you know, have a few USBs to work with, you know, people like Big Fish, or Meyer, to start printing it out and putting the image out there, too, so.
Just out of curiosity, why isn't Manistee capitalized, just?
I don't know, I can ask the consultant if you want me to, I think it was a, a matter of aesthetics. Um, there was, one of the other logos needed an apostrophe, and I was like, oh, I think this grammatically needs an apostrophe, and he said that because of the aesthetics, they didn't, they don't add it, um, but I can find out more.
The machine's capitalized.
We can make it capitalized.
I'm not, I'm just asking.
Oh, okay. Okay, do you guys any more feedback questions for me?
Anybody?
No?
So, how about independent contractors, I mean, independent contractors work too, can they use some of these logos?
It should be available for everyone, and I'm gonna work with Ed for them to be in the city's website, so whomever wants to use it will have to go through the city, and like download it from the city directly, but yeah, there, there should be open for everyone. As long as they don't say City of Manistee, just all the other ones, they should be.
And that was a recommendation of a branding consultant, and he just basically said it's, it's free advertising for the community.
Right.
So, it's available.
Anybody else?
No more questions? Okay, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Next, discussion on deer call, Mr. Smanowski.
Hey, I, I just was, you know, looking for an update from the city on where we're at this year. Um, again, have we had any opportunities to look at other ways of calling deer, and have we coordinated so that some of the issues we had last year, the late hunts, and the, and not getting the, the meat back?
Right, I'm gonna defer to Sergeant, uh, Tom Bruce, he's been coordinating it on behalf of the city. Uh, he's had the direct contacts, uh, with USDA, so I, he can speak to those.
Uh, I have been in contact with, uh, the USDA, I've been talking with, uh, Patrick Bryan. He is cur- pardon?
I'm sorry.
He is currently going to be turning a lot of the op-, uh, daily operations over to his number-two person, his name is Anthony. I was introduced to him this morning on my way to training. Uh, last year, one of the problems we ran into was the break of the weather. The reason why the call, what, it was successful, given the parameters of which we found ourselves operating in. Uh, we were able to get fairly, well, a fairly significant number in a very short period of time, as the weather was breaking. That was the initial issue. This year, what we're planning on doing is, we're gonna be starting operations, uh, the beginning of January. Hopefully, operations will be concluded by the middle of February to end of February, which is almost two months prior than what had happened last year. Uh, we're putting in for at least fifty permits this year, and hopefully, we're gonna get those filled. We're also looking to have a local USDA proc- or USDA processor, so that all the meat this time around will be retained here in the city. This year, to date, as of right now, it was about twenty minutes ago, we've had twelve cardeers. Separate from that, we've had to dispatch eleven animals, which the most recent being was Friday, and that was at the intersection of, uh, Elm and Fourth Street.
So this is one of the things that I, that, um, I've talked with the Public Safety Director about, is, is your, your concern, and a concern I had, um, last year was we didn't get all the meat, so that's been taken care of, that's been, you know, passed on to USDA loud and clear that we, that we wanna do it. And if, if, if they can bear the cost of a USDA processor, then we can distribute it through the food pantry, so, you know, that's where, that's the direction we're heading in. Um, you know, last year was our first attempt at it, and it was like, any new process and program, there's some, there were some issues. We've learned from it, Sergeant, uh, Bruce is gonna be coordinating this and tweaking it up and making it better going forward.
I think you lost when you took, when you started talking about January through the middle of February, something, that this, this would be happening. Um, didn't they come in and stay here for about three days, and then that was it?
It was more than three days, they were here, they set up operations, that took, uh, two days to set up their operations, set up the feeding sites, with the primary site being the, uh, being the golf course. Again, this year, the primary s- site is the golf course. Uh, the difference is, like I said, the weather broke before we had an operation, before we were able to set up our operation. We set it up to where we had started baiting, it was at the end of February, and then it started into March, and we had to have operations finished before the, uh, first of April. So we were done in about three-week period, at the request of, uh, I think it was the standing president from the, uh, country club.
Okay, so, given that they have this setup time, um, do you think it'll run about another three weeks?
Not sure how fast it's gonna be set up, I think they're gonna give an opportunity to get the bait set up in place, because they're able to do that through, uh, through the DNR, they're able to, uh, set up the baiting operations, but it's my understanding that they'll get a chance to get the deer into those areas where calling operations are most productive.
Are we gonna have an opportunity to call some deer on the north side of Manistee? Because they've got a problem too.
I would agree with that, they have.
They don't swim across the river very often, although I've seen them on the bridge.
I've seen them on the bridge, and we've had quite a few cardeers, uh, right there where Chapo's is, right there at the intersection. I had responded to one, it was at the beginning of last week, uh, but I was not able to locate the animal.
I don't know that there's any places that we've identified on the north side that is conducive to doing the call.
But I think there are, I can, I can, I, I think there's an area right behind the, uh, Oak Grove Cemetery that would probably be ideal, uh, and then, you know.
We'd have to, it's a private owner that.
Right, exactly.
We'd have to make sure Mr. Kowsky would be.
I think he'd be amenable to that, I think, if we address it with them.
If the council would like me to set that up, I would, I would be more than happy to make.
I certainly would love that, I think the residents on the north side would be very appreciative.
How about those fifty permits, are those, uh, people gonna shoot the deer, or get the deer, or whatever it is?
Specifically, the, uh, USDA uses their own shooters, they use silenced firearms. Uh, they're very good at marksman, I've had an opportunity to talk with them last year, go over their equipment, and they have, they have it very well organized and set up, and it's very safe the way they conduct their operations. Uh, as far as opening it up to any additional people, that has not, that's never been answered. Somebody recently asked me why, actually, it was Chief Coles will ask me what the opportunity to use crossbows. Well, as a hunting perspective, you have a chance to get the deer in close. When you're using a firearm suppressed, you're able to get the fi- deer, the deer will usually, deer, after you take that first initial shot, the deer will run off maybe fifty yards. With a suppressed firearm, they're still within that range to take a second deer. With a crossbow, you're out of crossbow range, you're not gonna be able to do that, uh, from the distance at the, the times that they're shooting.
I think what he was, when he was referencing fifty permits was, that's how many deer they would be, uh, allowed to take by the DNR?
I believe that's pretty open-ended, isn't it? I mean, if you wanted sixty, you could probably get sixty.
I would just have to talk, contact Mr. Griffiths, and yes, we could probably get however many permits we were.
You get the record back when people said that when they shot their twenty, some, in the springtime, the does were dropping three at a time in some of the air, and some of the people that complained up here in fact, had three, three, uh, fawns at one time in the air.
I don't know anything about how, what the reproduction of, uh, does would be, when it comes to dropping fawns.
There, these people counted that, were here, they counted, they had fifty compared to the twenty they just got rid of.
That's.
Are you improving anything, that's the problem?
That's something I'm not qualified to answer.
To be clear, what's the cost this year for?
We've allocated ten thousand dollars for it, and that's the number we're, we're giving to the USDA, correct?
Yes, that was the number we're giving, uh, to the USDA. Last year, I think they came in just shy of the ten thousand dollar mark, but really close to it.
Right.
And we agreed to do this for three years, for ten thousand each year.
I can't remember if it was for three years, I just know that we did it last year, we're budgeted for this year. I, I don't recall that it was three years, it could have been.
I think that's what we discussed, that it would take more than.
Oh, it was gonna take multiple years, yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Bruce? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else on the issue? Council members, do you have anything other?
I just wanna apologize for me being late, I had parent duties.
Really?
Yeah.
That's your priority, though.
Hearing none, we're adjourned.